Well, good evening. My name is Greg Ferris and as President of the Forney ISD Board of Trustees, I hear by call the Forney ISD Board of Trustees meeting to order. It's now six o'clock PM. Certify that a quorum is present, that the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required by law. The month of meetings are open to the public, although these meetings are public, comments and questions from the audience will be confined to the time designated for citizens to address the board. Again, thank you all for being here tonight. We're going to go into executive session now at 6:01 PM. This is item number 13. We'll take it out of order and we'll reconvene back in the open session later on. We'll go into closed session now under Texas Government Code 551-074, 551-071, and 551-072. Will now be dismissed. A voting will take place until we reconvene to open session. Good evening. It's now seven o'clock and we'll reconvene our meeting and back into open session. We'll moving on then with item number three for the evening. Our invocation tonight will be led by Jeremy Suter from Family Cathedral Church. We're proud to have Jeremy and Family Cathedral as partners with us. Please rise as he leads us in our invocation.
Thank you for this opportunity. Let's pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us another day of life. Thank you for this wonderful school district that cares so much for the students, the employees, and this community. I pray that you continue to give this board wisdom in guiding this district into areas that they've never been in before. Thank you for a school district that leads by example and that they continue to set the standard for other school districts. We ask all this in Jesus' name, amen and amen. Thank you.
You may be seated. My name is Greg Ferris. I'm President of the Board and we're glad to have each of you here tonight. At this time, we'll begin some recognitions and we're going to start with our students. First of all, we have, at this time, we'll have Ms. Anna Aguilar from Rhodes Intermediate School who'll introduce the Secondary Student of the Month, and then we'll have Kristi Crabtree, Principal of Griffin Elementary, introduce the Elementary Student of the Month. After the introductions, then they will lead us in our pledges.
Hi. Our Rhodes Intermediate Student of the Month is Lashia Patel. Lashia is truly an exceptional student with outstanding qualities both inside and outside the classroom. She consistently meets all academic standards and embodies our Forney ISD values. Her dedication, responsibility, and remarkable character make her a valuable asset in every classroom she enters. As a band student, Lashia sets a high standard for her peers showcasing qualities of tenacity, dedication, and great character. She epitomizes the ideals we aim for in our students at Rhodes. Studious, humble, and always ready to assist others, which is why she is an amazing office aide. Moreover, her hard work, passion for learning, and unwavering dedication are truly admirable. Lashia's positive and friendly demeanor brighten up our school environment, making her a cherished member of both staff and peers. In every aspect of school life, Lashia's presence enriches the learning experience for everyone around her.[205.34][205.34][applause]
All right. Thank you, Board and Dr. Terry. It is my privilege to introduce Ariana Weaver, who is a fourth grader at Griffin Elementary. She's the daughter of Tiana and Erin Weaver and the sister Asha. Ariana is a member of the Griffin Leadership Team and was elected by her peers to be President. On the leadership team, she's extremely well-spoken, responsible, trustworthy, works well with her teammates, and is always the first to volunteer to help wherever she is needed. Ariana lives the Griffin Mission Statement every day. Grizzlies will always strive to have a positive culture that encourages the growth of all stakeholders. Our counselor, Ms. Burke, says Ariana works hard every day to try to make a difference at Griffin. She is a greeter every morning and always has a big smile and is willing to help out wherever she is needed. She has even created programs at Griffin and recently wrote about Black History Month and was featured on the announcements. Ariana is a smart, kind, outgoing student. When Ariana is not at school, she likes to spend her time cheering, dancing, and playing volleyball. It is my honor to recognize Ariana Weaver as the Griffin Student of the Month.[288.12][288.12][applause]
If you would rise for the pledges, the student will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the pledge to the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.[347.19][347.19][applause]
Moving on to some more recognitions at this time, I'd like to ask Janey Glanton, Director of Fine Arts, to come and share about the next award.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Terry, we are delighted to join you this evening. The Forney ISD Fine Arts Department is proud to share the recent accomplishments of the Warren Middle School cheer team.[404.13][404.13][applause] The cheer team recently competed in the NCA competition, winning second place in the Junior High Middle School Large Game Day Division at the NCA State of Texas Competition. This team also competed at the NCA National Event, earning sixth place overall. Congratulations to these students and their coach, Ms. Litts, on a successful competitive cheer season.[432.13][432.13][applause][433.13][433.13][laughter]
Congratulations, ladies and parents. Thank you all. Next will be our, when moving on, I'll ask Ms. Tina Spain to come to the microphone, Director of Guidance, and she's going to share about the CREST Award.
Mr. Ferris, thank you and the Board. I'm excited to congratulate and celebrate Lauren Burke, Griffin Counselor, and Amber Reese, Ray Counselor, for receiving the CREST Award. CREST stands for Counselors Reinforcing Excellence for Students in Texas. This award recognizes exemplary programs based on campus and counselor leadership and advocacy for serving students in the school communities. Schools receiving CREST Awards have demonstrated a commitment to improve the lives and achievement of students in academic, career, and personal domains. Mrs. Burke and Mrs. Reese were recently recognized at the Texas School Counselor Association Conference in San Antonio during an awards dinner on February 4th. We are so very thankful for their commitment to serving Forney ISD students, campus, district, and community. Congratulations again to Lauren Burke, Amber Reese, Kristi Crabtree, and Griffin Elementary for being one of an elite group of schools from across the state to win the CREST Award for counseling excellence. Ms. Burke, Ms. Reese, Ms. Crabtree, please come up.[538.16][538.16][applause]
We're going to move on to item number six. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. G. Weber, Chief Learning Officer, if she would make her way to the microphone. This would be a public hearing, so may I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing? May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Ferris, I have a motion to open the public hearing.
Have a motion, Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burke-Halter. Ms. Dr. Weber, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Ferris, School Board members and Dr. Terry, the Texas Academic Performance Report, or TAPER, pulls together a wide range of information on the performance of students for all Texas schools and every Texas district. The report provides extensive information on schools and districts' academic success, staff, programs, and student demographics. Texas Education Code, Chapter 39, requires that each district's Board of Trustees publish an annual report and host a public hearing. The full TAPER reports are available on the district website and have been previously shared with the School Board members.
Dr. Terry, any further comments?
No, sir, not at this time. We do keep that posted on our website at all times for anybody who would like to explore.
Any questions from the Board? I hear none, then I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Riga, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, thank you very much. Dr. Weber, appreciate it. Moving on to item seven then. I report the next three items. The reports only require no action of the Board. First, we'll start with the monthly finance report. Mr. John Chase, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Tonight's financial report includes operating results through the month of January. Starting with the general fund, highlights include the year-to-date revenue recognized of $119 million and expenditures of $117.6 million. Some things to note in the general fund include 62% of the amount of revenue estimate has been collected. This is about 5% lower than it has been in previous years. I think we discussed this a little bit last month, but this is primarily due to the fact that the state's equalized portion of our tax collections related to the tax rate election we held in November hasn't been applied to our funding entitlement yet, and that recently got applied. And we'll start receiving that additional revenue. It's about, almost, close to $8 million. It will flow to starting in April and ending in August. We're still getting the tax collections that we get off the properties. It's just the additional revenue that we get from the state for also the equalized portion of that that we're talking about. Another thing to note is in our January tax collections, we're $54.5 million, and we talked about this last month in our quarterly tax collection report that we were significantly behind in December because the weekend fell across, the last few days fell across that weekend, and so our tax collections were really behind. But to date now through the end of January, we're back on track and we're at normal levels that we would expect to be at this time of year. Our expenditures, there's really nothing to report here, and they're trending as expected. Moving on to food service, highlights in the food service fund is year-to-date revenue recognized is $4.8 million and expenditures are $5.3 million. And just like we reported last month, there's about $5 million expenditures that exceed revenues, $5.5 million, excuse me. And the debt is by design. This is because we had more than three months of operating expenses in our food service fund at the end of the last fiscal cycle, and the TDA is expecting us to reduce that fund balance, and so we're doing that, buying equipment and paying retention pay and some things like that in order to get it down below the three-month threshold. We don't have anything related to report in the debt service fund tonight, just tax collections, and they're trending as expected. And so finally, the cash and investment balances at January 31st. And the general fund, food service, debt service total, capital project fund totals $4.4 million, and the majority of which is on deposit, our capital project funds. But if there's any questions specifically about the report that was in your book tonight, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Move on then to the Master Planning Update. Ms. Kim Morsec, Chief Operations Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Board. Jeff Fisher was unable to attend the meeting tonight, so I'll be giving the Master Planning Report. We'll start with Keith Bell Opportunity Central. We had some long lead items that are finally coming in and we're nearing completion there. Finishing up the striping on the courts in the arena, adjusting their retractable seats just after we've used them a couple times. Still need a few adjustments as those are so new. Exterior signage installation is in progress. The OC Theater sign actually went up today. Parking lot signs are in. AV system finish out is in progress. Movable walls in the theater are in progress. MEP in the studio is in progress. Leighton's Bakery and Southern Social are not Gallagher projects. They're both doing those on their own, but they're both in progress and have about a month left on those two before they should be opening. And then a few other interior finishes and then some punch items we're in progress on. And then we're also finishing out the secondary FFNE progress with exhibit concepts. I think they'll be back next week to finish out some long lead items they had as well. North Forney and Forney High Freshman Centers, there's a few things in the parking lot that we're finishing with some irrigation. All the exterior stuff other than irrigation is complete. Almost through with elevators. Just had a really rough time with elevators at both projects, but they should be done and be able to be inspected this month. We had some RFPs on some projectors that got missed in the original project. They're in progress and should be done soon as well. North Forney High School Phase Two, that's the stadium, gym locker rooms and restroom floor slabs are complete. The elevator is in progress. The hoistway is complete. Press box and gym bleacher structural steel is in progress. Masonry work is in progress. It's kind of what they're working on right now. We moved Darren Bushnell from the OC over there. He's our steel guy and he's slinging steel as fast as he can, so the good weather has been good for us, making really good progress over there. Forney High School, they're kind of in the same place as North Forney. Just a few items to try and finish up. Those elevators are the biggest issue we have there. Forney High School Phase Two, the stoops and sidewalk pores are in progress. About to finish our start grading and concrete pores on the fire lane. Second floor steel erection, I think actually finished yesterday. First floor overhead mechanical MEP installations are in progress. You can see the masonry going up there on the pictures on the right. Roof steel decking installations are scheduled to start next week, and then the second floor concrete deck pore is also scheduled to start next week, weather permitting. It looks like it's going to be pretty good weather for spring break. Temer Middle School, I actually walked Warren last week, and those are looking really, really good. A lot of the interior finishes are starting to come on and starting to really look like schools. So they're two weeks out from being completely in the dry. They've started some of the rooftop AC units. Actually, I'm sorry, at Temer, they've completed those. Grid installation is in. Plumbing fixtures and toilet partitions are complete. The football field there, subgrades in progress. The performing arts and fine arts wing, they're starting sheet rock, which they just started on Monday. Those look great over there. Concession scene in the kitchen, brick veneer is in progress. Metal panel installations are in progress, and the courtyard and curtain wall are in progress and nearing completion. Warren Middle School is about in the same place as Temer. They're both looking really, really good. Ed Wilson, they are in the dry, which is a wonderful thing, in areas 1A and 1, so they can really start those interior finishes. MEP, rough ends are complete. Interior framing is complete. The drywall and tile backer installations are in progress. Exterior veneer is in progress and nearing completion. And then Area Two, interior framing is in progress. They're going to start double siding those walls very soon. Exterior moisture proofing is in progress. Window frames are in progress, and they're trying really hard to get that whole building in the dry as well. Just some more pictures from Ed Wilson. Then the Innovation Way expansion, that's that road going out to Ed Wilson. They're working on sidewalks and ramp work. The steam concrete goes in the roundabout out there. That should start on Monday, and the retaining wall should start next week as well. It's a big retaining wall that goes out there. If you haven't driven out there yet, you need to. The view is spectacular and the building is looking really good. Ray Intermediate, the fire lane pore is complete. The bus turnaround concrete pore is complete. The music wing, gray bean pores are complete, and they're putting in vapor barriers now. So Ray is on schedule and looking really good as well. I believe that is it. I can try and answer questions.
Any questions for Kim? I hear none. Thank you very much. Next item is 7C, Notice of Intruder Detection Audit Findings. There were no findings this month to be discussed. Moving on to item eight, Public Forum. No one signed up to address the Board tonight. Then move on to item nine, Consent Agenda. 9A is minutes from the February 5th Board Meeting. 9B is Budget Amendments. 9C is Renewal of Progress Learning. 9D is Rental House Agreements. 9E is Statement of Impact from Charter Schools, which could have a major impact on Forney ISD, and that is Harmony Public Schools, UT Texas, and Texas College Prep. The Board may take action on them separately or collectively. Do I have a motion from the Board?
Mr. Ferris, I move that the Board collectively approve the consent agenda as presented.
Dr. Mudiya, make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to item 10, Consideration Possible Approval of New Campus Mascots. Ms. Susan Johnson, Executive Director of Strategic Partnerships, please.
Good evening, President Ferris, Dr. Terry, and Distinguished Board. In January, a survey was sent to our future students and their guardians that were, who were zoned for Wilson Elementary, Jones Intermediate, and Temer Middle School. They were to vote on their favorite mascot. The voting ended on February 2nd, and the following mascots were selected by majority. Wilson Wildcats, Jones Jayhawks, and Temer Titans. I believe we have the principals here tonight, yes, to do this.[1252.01][1252.01][applause] Tonight, we are presenting the mascots for consideration. Logo designs will follow later this spring.
The Board, you've heard the recommendations. Do I have a motion from the Board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the Board approve the new campus mascots.
Have a motion from Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none.[1281.16][1281.16][applause] Thank you all for being here for that presentation. Moving on then to number 11, Consideration Impossible Approval Granting Hiring Authority Superintendent through September 9, 2024. Mr. Rick Gere, Chief Human Services, will be the presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, School Board, and Dr. Terry. As you can know, between now and the end of the school year, it becomes a very critical time for hiring personnel. And so what we've done in the past few years that has proven to be very, very successful is granting the superintendent hiring authority through September the 9th, and it gives us the ability to not have to wait a month to offer someone a contract. Once we find a qualified individual, qualified educator, then we can move quickly after doing all the background and all the other stuff that is required through HR. But we're asking the Board at this time to approve and grant the hiring authority to our superintendent through September 9th, but of course, we will always bring that back to the Board for ratification at our next Board meeting.
Dr. Terry, do you have any other comments?
No, just appreciate the flexibility. This does help us to, in a tough market right now, get our candidates under contract as soon as possible. So we would recommend the approval of granting the hiring authority to the superintendent as presented.
The Board, as you know, this has been our practice in the past years. Do you have any further questions? Do I have a motion from the Board?
Mr. Ferris, I move that we approve granting hiring authority to the superintendent through September 9, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Burke-Halter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Dobbs, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Then item number 12, Consideration Possible Approval Resolution for Vouchers, Education Savings Accounts, Tax Paying Savings Grants, and Other Mechanisms That Reduce Public Education Funding. Dr. Terry will be our presenter for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Board. If you'll recall, we in April of last year actually came to you with a TASB resolution against voucher programs in any sort of form, and we are coming to you back again this year for a reaffirmation with a reaffirmation of this same resolution. And so I will read the resolution as presented and be happy to answer any questions. Whereas Article 7, Section 1 of the Texas Constitution requires that the Texas Legislature establish and make suitable provisions for the support and maintenance of an efficient system of public free schools, whereas Texas public school districts accept every student, whereas educational savings accounts and other voucher schemes give private schools, not parents, the right to choose, whereas Texas public schools adhere to state-mandated academic and financial accountability standards, whereas private schools are not required to meet the same academic standards as public schools, and they do not report test results, graduation rates, and other performance measures to the public, whereas school choice already exists in the Texas via public school districts, charter schools, intra and intra district transfers, home schools, virtual schools, and private schools, whereas educational savings accounts and similar voucher schemes eliminate public accountability of schools and tax dollars, whereas using tax dollars to pay for tuition at private and religious schools would grow into a costly entitlement program, whereas a taxpayer-funded voucher program would reduce the amount of state funds available for schools, harming many rural Texas communities where families have few, if any, private school options, and whereas Texas parents who accept a voucher would lose out on a long list of important parental rights outlined in the Texas Education Code and in federal law, especially protections for students receiving special education services. Now therefore be it resolved that the Forney ISD Board of Trustees calls on the Texas Legislature to reject any diversion of public dollars to private entities in the form of educational savings account or similar voucher schemes. The Board, we appreciate your support in this. Be happy to answer any questions. I know there's a lot in the media, and we just wanted to define our stance as a school district to support our public school system.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. Do I have any questions from the Board? Any comments?
savings account or similar voucher schemes. The board, we appreciate your support in this. Be happy to answer any questions. I know there's a lot in the media, and we just wanted to define our stance as a school district to support our public school system.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. Do I have any questions from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I move that the board approve the resolution against vouchers, education savings accounts, tax payers, savings grants, and other mechanisms that reduce public education funding as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Let the record reflect that we had a unanimous vote to uphold this vote against vouchers in the state of Texas and continue to support public schools. So thank you, Dr. Terry, and your team for your leadership. This time, we'll move on then to item number 13, and we'll be convened into closed session under Texas Government Code 551074, 551071, 551076, 551129, 551072. We'll be covering 13B, Safety and Security Intruder Information, 13C, Deliberation Regarding Employment of Professional Contract Personnel, 13D, Deliberation Regarding Contract Renewal of Administrators and Other Personal Contract Personnel, 13E, Deliberation Regarding Pursuit of Sanctions or Educator Abandonment of Contract, and then 13G, Deliberation Regarding Potential Sale, Lease, or Purchase of Real Property. The board will now be dismissed at 7:30 into closed session. It's now 8:06 PM. We'll call it back into open session and pick up with item number 15. There's no action on 14, we're going on to 15. Consideration and Possible Approval of Contract of Renewal of Administrators and Other Professional Contract Personnel. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion the board approve the contract renewal of administrators and other professional contract personnel.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Burke Holter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Item 16, Consideration and Possible Action Regarding the Pursuit of Sanctions for Educator Abandonment of Contract. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move that the board find that no good cause existed for Linda Fernandez to abandon her contract with Forney ISD and authorize the superintendent to take necessary action to report the employee to SBECTEA for review.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Then moving on to item 17, Consideration and Possible Approval to Declare a Surplus of the Surface Only for Approximately 4.86 Acres of Real Property Located at 309 South Bodark, Forney, Texas, Kaufman CAD 28136 and 23763, and Authorize Administration to Advertise the Property for Sale by Sealed Bid. Do I have a motion on this?
President Ferris, I move that the board declare as surplus and authorize the superintendent to publish notice of the district's intention to sell the surface only of approximately 4.86 acres, Kaufman Central appraisal district ID number 28136 and 23763 pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section 272.001, to receive and publicly open bids and present the bids to board trustees for final.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Mudiya, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Below that, you see some announcements and dates ahead. The first one coming up there is spring break, so everybody be aware of that. Traffic should be lighter next week, so enjoy your week out, everybody else, and if there's nothing further, then this meeting will be adjourned at 8:09 PM.